My instructor is looking up at me.
Yeah, okay, I was just gonna say because there are some programs that are related to stuff like that. You might be able to get seedlings and I know a lot of schools do some.
I'm like, I can't get down buddy. I'm like, if I get this thing down, I thought of you like this whole, so I always had it, I always had a jitter illusion with one of their instructors too, like right when I come in, he like turns into me, I can't go left, I'm turning right, he's over coming, I mean he comes out from the night and turn, he crosses a razor in front of me. I'm like, traffic over, wait, he sees me just as he comes by me.
Is that where that's at?
When I land, he goes, you were following me. By that time, he missed the whole time, he crossed in front of me. So the time he saw me, he saw me.
How many acres is it?
And he was over coming, like you know, so anyway, so the force of how we know.
And the same guy marked that as marked first?
I don't care if I'm in the grass, I just care if this thing was planted with one. I'm like, all I could do is do like multiple times, like if I just get this plant on the ground, I know, I don't have a hurry, but I can't. I'm like, I, I, I already say that, they're so careful. Ground, so the fourth time I come around, and I'm like, I'm like, I've watched the plane for like over two hours now, like I've had it. So I come in, but I'm like, I'm just gonna get it off the ground, I'm like, I said, I don't care, as long as I can walk away from it, I don't even care what this plane looks like when it's on the ground. So I come in, and amazingly, it was a nice landing, it was off center line, it was fine. I was like, my instructor comes on, he goes, he goes, good job, bye, beautiful. I'm like, I don't even wanna hear it now, I'm like, I'm seriously considering a career change right now. I was like, because I mean, when the anus is telling you, like, I'm like, why, why is it eight, I'm like, I didn't learn for two minutes. And then like solo, and no reason to do this, I was just, I had had it, you know? It was like, gosh, it was just. It was horrible, it was horrible. Feel your stomach, like, I'm like, that's it, it's gonna kill you, but you can feel your stomach, like, it's bubbling through me, I'm like, keep the lid on the pot, have it, keep the lid on the pot. So I was like, I was like, gee, I can't get down, I'm like, I can't get down, I can't get the. You're better for control.
Folks, I'm gonna call to order the six P M. work session, um, public participation, change to agenda items.
Larry Emerson.
Larry, thank you.
Uh, I'm wondering, uh, yeah, about here, the uncollectible accounts receivable, you want to discuss them and the amounts and why they're uncollectible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are, thank you, Larry. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the airport update.
Okay, put this on here, just to give everybody a little update of what's going on out there with a couple of issues. First of all, within the next couple of weeks, we should be getting started putting in the holding tanks for the sewer system out there. Uh, we're going out to the end of this week and get it all mapped out and get ready to start digging. So we will be, uh, we should be wrapping that up in two to three weeks. Secondly, I want to touch base on the project that we've all discussed, where we run the city sewer line out to the airport. It, uh, I, I approached the USDA after the government shutdown, and I talked to them about the, what all the requirements were to obtain the grant to do this project. And one of the things that the USDA requires, even though the D E P does not, they require that any house that you go within a hundred and fifty feet of has to tie onto that system. That's, they mandate that. So when I approached the township with this, because I've been to a couple of their meetings, we've discussed this in depth, they were not favorable to that. They, they have no desire to force any of their residents to get on that system, which, that's entirely their right. So I guess where it stands right now, unless we can find another grant that doesn't have this requirement, where we can run that sewer system with grant money, that project's pretty much on hold while we research ultimate financing.
And D E P. said there wasn't that requirement or stipulation?
County said it wasn't a requirement, and Benango County said it was, so, so I don't honestly know where that lies, but to town, in either event, the township has to be on board with that, and they are not.
The township is.
Or Creek Crawford.
Any questions about that?
I mean, no, but the holding tanks, did you already purchase those?
No, those are pretty much already in stock, they just have to like drill a hole where we want them, so we've gotta go out and get the other tank dug up, figure out exactly where we want those holes. They'll drill them, then we'll have it ready, they'll come out, they'll deliver those tanks, set them right in the hole for us. Because they're concrete tanks, they're heavy.
Who's going to do the excavating?
Uh, I don't know if we'll do it in-house, or we might shut that out, we, uh, an excavator would work better for that than a backhoe, just, just because of the nature of it, so we'll probably vac some of it out, uh, round some of the fittings and stuff, so we don't hurt them, and we'll probably, I have not decided completely yet, I've been talking with Ryan about it, we may hire an outside person to do some of that digging.
And we're gonna be digging everything up?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry, will one call still be good for that?
No.
Okay, one year and one.
You have to, you know, one call is good, you can start in seventy-two hours, and it's only good for two weeks, if you don't use it, you have to recall.
Okay, sounds good.
Are there any questions? No, okay. Is that all?
That's it on that.
Okay. Uh, the lighting and zoning ordinance update.
So everybody had the opportunity to look at it, uh, put it in your packet, this was our, uh, after our last work session, the discussion we gave this to Rich, and he implemented all the notes from that work session, the changes, the additions, and this is, uh, the new draft. It seems to be pretty well defined as far as, uh, our ability to, to get these readings with the equipment that we have purchased. Go ahead, Don.
I just have a couple of questions for clarification if I may. In C six, under the definition of fully shielded, you know, it talks about horizontal plane, you know, through the lowest light emitting portion of the air. So then I just wanted to jump over to, um, B two and A. And I just want, and this is clarification from it, talks about like site entrances, the, the next, the last sentences there. How does one handle a coach porch light? Because the light shines out of the sun, you see, the light bulb may be here, and with a fully shielded one, you'd be measuring from the bottom. I just wanna make sure that a person still can use a typical porch light that they buy at the hardware store on their residences, that's all I wanna understand.
I guess my interpretation would be if there was an issue with that, then we would go to the property line and get a reading of how many candles.
In other words, if you are causing a nuisance to somebody else's property, then we would come back and talk with you about that.
Yep, and we'd take a reading and see if you weren't in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay, that's fine with me, as long as, I guess what I'm saying is, if a resident comes up and asks me, well, can I use a porch light like we have and use it, I just wanna make sure I can say yes, unless you got a blast in somebody's window. Then on three G, we're still talking about having the lights point downwards, okay? And I, I did do a investigation last time that we talked about it, there are some reasons for pointing it, pointing up, but if you're still talking, still talking, pointing downwards, then that means that if you've got a, a regular metal C sign, forceful sign or something like that, you gotta put a beam across and you have to point it downwards to the sign.
I agree with that.
Okay, just clarification. In, uh, section, where was it? Under, um, well, it's number seven, it's on the next page. Uh, there's one word in there that, that needs a couple of, this is next to the last sentence, this needs to be fixed right there. It's after point three for candles. And then number three itself.
Wait a minute, did you say that again?
It's misspelled.
Requirement, it's got more letters.
I didn't, I missed all that.
Right here. You don't want the requirement spoken.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, at least it shows I did read it.
Yes, sir, that's what it's all about, Don.
Okay, then I'd like to go to E, E number three, if I could please, which is, you know, the next to the last page. And then also refer back to what I previously told you about number seven, D seven, I guess it is. D seven is telling us about having something in there for at night for on electronic signs to take and minimize the light down to a specification, okay? Over in E three, we're talking about these measurements here. So as an example, in your chart that you, you've obtained here, it says ten square foot area of the sign. So therefore your measurement, and this is, again, clarification, I'm understanding that your measurement's gonna be thirty-two feet away when you wanna take and measure this point three. But up here, and Rich, this is something that you might wish to think about here, in point three, it doesn't say anything about that measurement being taken in, in, in the dark. Otherwise, you're not gonna get a good measurement there. Is that making any sense yet? Number seven, you're talking about the difference of a light that, that's off, and when it has a solid message on the thing here. And it's saying point three foot candles at night. So all I'm wondering here is, do you wish to take and make a statement that under number E three, that this measurement is done in a dark setting? Because I think your measurement may be wrong if you try to do it in the daylight.
I don't see any problem with that, that.
No, I, I think it's implied in the other one, that the requirement is only at night, that we can certainly put.
No, I'm just asking you, because I, I wanna make sure it's perfectly clear to whoever uses this, that's all I'm just asking. It's, it's up to you folks, if you, I didn't want somebody to take a reading during the day, and then they take a reading during the night, and then it's totally different, because you have all the ambient light during the day when you're trying to do this reading. At night, this what you're talking about, is the darkness, is that's what you're looking for, you're gonna measure it. In this case, thirty-two feet away, but you have a little sunlight and stuff like that, and it could take and give you a false reading, that was my only point.
Yeah, I, I think the better defined, the better.
It's up for, it's, I, it's up for discussion for you folks that are deeply involved with this stuff.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Keith?
You know what, I, I, I could tell you this, a couple of people in public asked me about this, and admittedly, I didn't understand it when we first initiated this thing, but the more I hear and the more I see and the more we talk, I certainly understand that this ordinance is the baseline for light, lighting issues. And just like a speed limit in a housing area, if someone wants us to drive, do something about the speeding through a housing area, you have to have an ordinance to establish a speed limit before you can enforce it. And that's what this does. It gives you the ability to measure and determine what to do about an issue that somebody brings forward, and that is important. So I, I understand that, I think, I just wanted to pass it on so the community understands what this is really all about, and that's what it's about.
I think we've come a long ways from our original thing.
No doubt, and the last thing I wanna say is this, uh, you guys have put a lot of time into this thing, and that has not gone unnoticed by this councilman, and we appreciate your all's effort in, in bringing this piece, because it's not an easy piece to bring, but that's what I have to say.
The planning commission spent, I mean, unbelievable amount of hours, and you've been working on that for what? A year? Bill, we appreciate it, thank you, Heather, thank you, John, let all the folks know that. Are there any other questions, Bill?
No, I'm just saying, if there's any, if there's, on my comments, I mean, if you don't agree with, say so.
We don't have a problem there, Don.
Okay.
We thank you. Um, Heather? Okay.
So, just one question before we close out of the session here. So, we'll make the, the adjustment on the language in this at night, and then you're good to, to schedule the public hearing, we have that public hearing scheduled, so I can go ahead and schedule a public hearing, uh, on this landing ordinance, everybody's good at that?
Would that be like before the council meeting or something?
That's the best way to do it, we have the public here, you know, we'll, we'll do it right out of, just prior to opening our council meeting.
Okay.
Now, one thing is, I say the word night, because we had night in another thing, it could be a darkened area, okay? So let's say that somebody is buying a sign, and they're in a garage, and they have a ten foot square area sign. So if they're inside of a garage, and they're trying to set up this control ahead of time, maybe probably do that, so I don't know whether you wanna use like a darkened area, but this is something for Rich to do.
Well, I think this would apply when it's already up, and the city's making sure it's in compliance.
Okay, it's in compliance.
Yeah.
Good, okay. So will you put this out on, um, the, um, city site website to have, um, to allow the, the public to view this before our hearing?
We certainly can, and they, they should have time to view it before the hearing, so they can make comments.
Good.
Absolutely.
Great, great. All right, we're gonna define the zoning, those zoning changes.
Right, we'll be in it also.
We'll be in the same.
Be the same here, those, those other zoning changes.
Yes, that was my question.
Yes, that'll all be part of it. We talked about those several months ago.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to council bill number three, two thousand nineteen, the right turn only center street.
Okay, this, uh, this was brought, uh, last month too, I guess, by Councilman Bromley, uh, he had some residents that would like to have that changed. I assume, because that was a city street, that the city had total authority on that. But when Mr. Adelman said that he'd like to hear an opinion from Pendott, I made that phone call. And Pendott at first had the same response, they said, well, that's a city street, but then he said, well, let me back up a minute. He said, let me dig out that contract, and I'll call you back and see what the stipulations were. So he dug out the agreement, uh, to when we removed the traffic light on spring and spruce. And part of that, part of that agreement stated that that street had to be one-way. But he did however say that, you know, it'd been long enough, he wasn't sure of everything, so he said, we will go out and remeasure that, that line of sight. The issue's the line of sight right there, because it's on a turn, and the, the second-hand store blocks your view when you're coming out of that street. So he went back, Pendott went back out there, the first time the weather broke, they remeasured it, and they said that that still holds true, they cannot approve that we turn that back to a two-way street without that traffic light. So at this point, uh, we have no authority to do that, so I guess we had one reading of the ordinance, but the ordinance will die because we, we can't ever have a second reading. But we tried.
Yep, the business knows, know that we tried.
We did try.
Well, I, I guess it was a while ago, and we weren't sure of all the readings, but we had that assumption or whatever, that, um, we had the right to take and do that. And I think it's the gentleman's measurements probably pushed it through, there just isn't a lot of site clearance.
They were very nice about it, more than wanting to go remeasure, make sure that that, you know, that that still, that they were correct on their, their measurements, and they said they were.
That's fine.
Okay, good, uh, moving on to resolution number one of two thousand nineteen, the write-off uncollectible accounts receivables.
Okay, if council, uh, remembers back a couple, oh, I don't know, it's been at least a couple of years ago, maybe longer, we did this one other time. And in your packet is the amounts of these write-offs. What happens is, if we don't write these amounts off, these people move away, uh, they, they, they grab a place, and then they leave, and these, these little trickling amounts of money stack up, and it just makes a, a nightmare in the county to keep carrying these. So at some point, we have to decide, these are non-collectible, they've already went through the collection agency, we cannot collect this money. And these are very minor amounts of money. Uh, as you can see here, the one, uh, the one sheet that you see is the total, some of these are two cents, I mean, that's how minor this stuff can be. The total on all of these, and I don't know how many there are here, there's a whole page of them, the total is ninety-five ten on this page, and on the next page is forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. So we're talking about a hundred, less than a hundred and forty dollars.
Everything is a hundred and five dollars, right?
Uh, I would say yes, that's a hundred and five dollars, yes, that's correct. And a lot of these, you know, these add up from penalties or what have, these may not even be part of a bill, or people didn't pay their total amount, there are a lot of different things, but some of these people are, have died, some no longer live in the area, uh, they're just totally uncollective, and more of a headache to try and collect than, than it's the county to do it with.
So, now I see one's ninety-five ten, and the other one is forty-three twenty-four.
That's the totals on each page.
Oh, that's a total.
Totals on each page.
Ninety-five dollars in terms of.
Right, is the total from that page?
For that page, and the other page is forty-three twenty-four.
Right, that's what I, that's what I meant. So you have a hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Yeah.
No. The first, the first page is.
Spot reference.
Yeah, like, we're not gonna write a check for sixty cents.
Oh, I'm not sure.
They didn't cut a check for sixty cents.
The city understands.
Oh, I misunderstood that myself, was it rewatched?
It's the second page, yeah.
Right, the second page is forty-three twenty-four.
Okay, so actually, it's not a loss at all, it's fifty dollars, fifty dollar gain to look at that one.
So the postage would exceed, uh?
Yeah.
Oh, that's why, yeah, that's why.
No, I misread it, sorry, I didn't notice.
Cause, cause you can't track these people down if they give that amount of two, right?
Some are, most are estate situations, uh, you can see they're listed there as estate of whatever, um, banks, realty.
Oh, so the first one is a credit, I see, right, okay. All right, that makes sense. Some of our, we'll see, some of these properties have already been sold.
So, do we have an ordinance in effect that basically says if it's under this amount?
We have a resolution, if it's under five dollars.
Okay, which makes perfect sense. And presumably, citizens are all aware of this, so it's not a big surprise to Farmers National Bank of Hamilton, but I'm not gonna give you four dollars back, okay? So it's just a matter of playing the books to agree with.
Right, we just don't wanna carry all this.
Yes, understood, yep, yep.
Well, you're whispering, I can hardly hear you.
I'm sorry.
That's strange.
And that bill, I think, is that they were handling for this address, it's not they themselves, you know what I'm saying? They were acting in it.
Right, understood.
You good with that?
Yeah, does that answer Mr. Emerson's question?
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to resolution number two of two thousand nineteen, Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certificate Certification Program.
And I, I think the best way to, to explain this is to read it out of an article that we received, and it, 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 it's better to explain this program, it's actually just a, a program that lets everyone know that we are a sustainable community, and there's a lot of different things involved. I'll read this, I'll give you a pretty good idea. The Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certification is a project of the Pennsylvania Municipal League that you all know we're a member of, have been forever. It is intended to bring recognition to municipalities that are applying the policy and practice of sustainability as the way of operating in order to advance community prosperity. Focused on municipal operations, policies, and practices, the certification also serves as a mechanism for sharing best practices for creating a more sustainable Pennsylvania. Adopting sustainability as a municipal strategy benefits many aspects, including government operations, can foster community economic opportunity and lead to more resilient and attractive communities. And as you can see down there, it's a point system, and where you fall, I think, I think Diana said where, if we, when we apply for this, well, would we be about the silver level, is that correct? Which is, which is really good, we're gonna enter, their goal, the goal of this community here, which is Chambersburg, I believe, is to become gold, so they must be in the silver now, too.
Sure.
What is this for?
Well, you're just saying that you support the program, that we are a sustainable community, and this also could help us, this gains us some, some recognition and some points on grants.
Okay.
So by doing this, this is a feather on our cap when we apply for grants. And it only requires a resolution to be passed saying that we support this program.
There's no fee involved.
No fees at all.
Sure, it's obvious that we wanna work our way up towards platinum.
That would be the goal. And a lot of things are considered, debts in here, I mean, uh, there's a lot of, of different categories covered.
What, what vehicle will we have in place to do to go back to this every once in a while and check it and keep it updated?
Do they not audit you, is that what I read in here?
Right.
That's what this actually is, the Chambersburg example is an audit.
They themselves, the P M, P M L, P M I, P M I.
F.
Yeah, they come and they do the, the, the review, and then you, they give you the ranking. How often do I have?
I wasn't sure. I don't know if that's annually, or, I don't know, so I redolled that, isn't here. I don't recall.
But it is at no expense to us, if I understand it correctly.
So we'll just add this to our goals list for types of options.
Well, you can get a, you can get a sign, you can put out.
There's very few platinum, Cambridge, Pittsburgh is a platinum, Cambridge Township, Marge area.
It doesn't really say how often, that's something I guess we'd have to phone and ask.
Do you know Oil City and Franklin and Louisville?
I don't know.
Do you know Francis? You know even what it is, do you? It's okay. We're not quite sure either. We'll figure it out, won't we?
Let's, let's equate this something to like, uh, what our shade tree committee does for us in this community allows us to become a tree city. And so this would be a similar type of thing, saying that we're operating within certain parameters, and our goals are for the betterment.
Yeah, and it, it will allow other communities, uh, you know, that are involved with us to see where we stack up with them, and we, the same with us, we can look at other communities and say, you know, they're a silver or a gold, or, you know, where do we, where are we aligned with others?
I guess as long as it's a tool that, that can be utilized to promote continual growth.
Yeah. As long as we don't have, we don't see something, a study coming from somewhere.
It's like, it's like the master plan that sits in the bookshelf and draws dust. What takes you back to it every once in a while, look at it and blow the dust off of it and see where we're at? You know what I mean?
Sure.
Is there a checklist or a vehicle that tells us to, you know, to take a peek at it every once in a while? Just wondering that, that question.
Okay, we're on to the P A one call request, offensive safety month, April, for April.
Yeah, April is the P A's safe digging month, and they would like communities to help them celebrate forty-seven years of service to the Commonwealth. Basically, it's a support letter saying, uh, support resolution saying we support, you know, safe digging, and that people are supposed to call the eight-one-one number, yeah, eight-one-one number before they dig, no matter where they live, whether they're in the city, they're in the country, it don't matter, everybody's supposed to call.
I've utilized, I have to say, it's a, it's a very clever service, one of those, and they're very expedient about coming out and videoizing.
It's, it's pretty efficient, and we deal with it as a city every day, of course, because, you know, we're part of it, and people call in. And when people call in, we have to go mark our lines and anything that we have underground so that people don't hit it. So it, it is a working system.
And it's a safety, it's a huge safety thing.
Oh, yeah.
I know a guy that stuck a, uh, backhoe into the ground and it hit the main line for the airport and he's lucky to be alive. So, could have been, could have been serious years ago.
Okay. We're good? All right, moving on to public input. Mr. Elliott?
I had a question about that resolution number one, the write-off of the uncollectible accounts receivable. The money that you owe to people, the ninety-five-ten, I think that's how much you owe, uh, people that you can't seem to, uh, find a way to pay, is that correct? How come that money doesn't get transferred over to the, uh, U S Treasury?
That's not correct, we have a resolution where we write off balances under five dollars.
Well, he had said that, Larry had sat up there and said that ninety-five-ten was the amount that they owed other people and you have forty-three something that is uncollectible?
That is owed us.
That the forty-three's owed you, the ninety-five-ten is owed to people you can't find.
That's correct.
So would, why would that money transfer to the U S Treasury?
Because we have a resolution, it's under five dollars per person.
You had the resolution now already?
It's already in place, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Am I allowed? I'm not a city taxpayer, it doesn't say it on the, uh, voting session.
You're not, Jamie, you're not a city taxpayer?
No. My local taxes go to Cherry Tree Township.
Oh, Jamie.
You ever paid a parking ticket?
Did you park wrong tonight?
He can probably help you out.
Jamie?
You should let him talk, this is a public meeting, you don't need to game here.
Yep. And, 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 and Jim, usually you're the type of person that hangs us out for that, I usually.
No, no, it's good.
And I do, and I, and I've never, to my knowledge, I've not stopped, uh, someone, that, go ahead, Jamie.
I would just like to comment on the lighting ordinance, with respect to all the men and women that put a lot of hours in on it, I'd actually set that aside for two reasons. One, it feels like government overreach that is to fix, uh, something that you perceive today as a problem, but not fix that problem and only target it from becoming a problem for the next person that goes to implement whatever it is you perceive as a problem. Number two, as Mr. Winkler said, this is an after-the-fact assessment. A person, doesn't have to be the next door neighbor, it doesn't have to be a person that's necessarily affected by the light every single day. One person makes a complaint and it's after the fact, after improvement has been done to a home or a business and then you're gonna come in and you're gonna measure it based on one complaint and then the homeowner or the business owner is gonna have to foot the bill to renovate or retrofit whatever it is that they were trying to do. This just seems to me like it's a big government overreach that has to be considered, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. We're gonna adjourn. I thank everyone for coming. You have to go in.
I have it.
Okay.
I was waiting on some, uh, some things I've been working on. But I don't know enough about it yet, it's too early.
Have you got to ask for a, 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 a?
Bring it up until I know more.
I know a P A one call, a whole pro paper.
Anyone where they are, you have a.
There's your lighting.
Oh, yeah, where do they know where to start, you know, if they're going.
Oh, they have them over there.
Maybe for an alien invasion.